And they, there was over 450,000 books, audiobooks, DVDs, or eBooks checked out at the public library. I was very thankful for the good work that's going on there today. Kelly and I took a little nickel tour of the place and just thankful for the kind of efforts and enthusiasm that Chris and his staff are affording our citizens and look forward to continued growth and development of our library, but they're doing a great job down there. Also wanted to announce that we will have a student that will join us on the Student Housing Task Force. James Sadie has been recommended by the Student Government Association at Auburn and he'll be joining the Student Housing Task Force, which will have its initial meeting a week from tonight at 4:15. I would say to you that that meeting will be more organizational in nature, maybe not as the most informative meeting you'll ever go to, so you might be disappointed if you come, if that's what you want to do, but you're certainly welcome to come, but we'll be meeting next Tuesday night for our first initial meeting with Student Housing Task Force. Okay? All right, and also want to remind everybody that the Polar Plunge is this Saturday and it supports Special Olympics and a bunch of crazy people are going to be jumping in the pool over at East Sanford School. There's a rumor that there's at least one person of this city council who might be participating. I won't say their name in public because they, they might chicken out at the last minute, but there is a possibility. But certainly if you want to go have some fun on Saturday morning and support a great, great cause, we encourage you to come over there and be a part of this. All right? Anyone else on the council have an announcement here tonight?
I just wanted to give an update on the Diversity Inclusion Task Force. Connie and I have been working and Ron as well on getting this going, and one of the things that we have discussed is adding some more people to the task force. Currently, I selected Brittany DeMent Cannon to, I'm sorry, Brittany Cannon DeMent on the, on the task force, so she'll be joining us, and there are a couple more that I, that I've selected, but we haven't had a far enough discussion to, to add them just yet, and I believe Connie has a few as well. And another thing that we will be doing is, Auburn University has a, what do you call it, a, a training? No, you're not helping.
Like a conference.
A conference, thank you. A conference in, I believe, end of February that will be attended, Connie and I, so hopefully we can learn more about, about the diversity and inclusion. And also, the, one of the directors at, at the university will be hosting a, will be hosting a, a learning session. She's going to give a presentation and that date hasn't been selected yet, but hopefully that will be coming in the near future for us to, to let you know about.
Okay, and I have also selected three people to serve on the task force. One of the people is Anthony Brock, Clinton Bird, and Christine Bradshaw. And I actually had another person, but it was a conflict with them being a city employee. So, we, Ron and I also met with the Jewish community, and that meeting turned out to be pretty productive, and there were some things that came up that we are going to talk about. Now, I also want to say this, when I say selecting, this is not the task force, this is just people that's going to give us some input with this diversity and inclusion. So it's not actually a committed forum yet until we get some ideas or know where we're going with this. So the people that we're selecting, and I know some people have asked me to be on it, well, this is a totally different selection. So, I just wanted to make sure I let you understand that, because I don't want nobody to come to me and say, hey, I thought you was going, let me be on it. It's not being on it right now, it's just that these are the people that we just, some community people that we're getting input from as to what direction we're going.
Anyone else?
Brett and I had a short-term rental task force meeting last week at the Frank Brown Recreational Center. We had a pretty packed room with a lot of opinions being given. We solicited public opinion, and we, we paid careful attention to that, and we're busy compiling a large folder of paper with the public's opinions. From here, we, we intend to find some further direction with where we're going with regards to building our task force, adding members to it, so that we get a better representation of our community, not just elected and appointed officials working it. And I don't know that we have a date scheduled for a second meeting, but you will be informed of that as, as it becomes clear. I have one other issue that, that I'd love to talk to you all about, too, with some, some of the members of the city council and staff had the great privilege of attending the Martin Luther King Breakfast hosted by the National Forum for Black Public Administrators on Monday at the Auburn Conference Center. And it was, it was a terrific event and totally appropriate, appropriate to celebrate it. And not only that, but one of our city staff was awarded an award, Allison Frazier from the Engineering Department. I'd like to congratulate you, Allison. It's a reflection of the great work that you're doing for our community. Thanks a lot. I'd like to give you a round of applause for that, too.
I want to add maybe a couple more things, too. Bob Parsons and I will be having an award meeting in February, I believe we have it set for Monday, the 4th, at the Auburn Chamber of Commerce at 5:30. And I also would like to bring something else up. Bob Parsons mentioned short-term rentals, and that is a big topic here in, in town, and I have had discussions with the city attorney and city manager about this. Because this is something that I do, I do not, I wanted to put it on the record that this is something that I'm going to be recusing myself from, so if there's any kind of discussion around short-term rentals, I will be leaving this, this area and wait till, until I'm told that I can come back. So I just wanted to make that, I just wanted to make, make that known, that I, I think that is the right thing to do in my heart. That's the, that's the right decision, so.
Thanks, Steve.
I just got one more, because my, my community, and I'm not going to call my award meeting is actually a community meeting that I'm having January 31st at the Boykin Community Center Auditorium from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. And the guest speaker is going to be Sharon Torbert, and she's actually, I said the last time, she was the director of the Housing Authority, but she's not, she's the CEO for the Auburn Housing Authority. And she's going to be speaking, and what she's going to be speaking on, she gonna, she gonna basically be talking about the future of the Housing Authority, but she also want to bring in some other projects that they're working on. So anyone that would like to attend, please feel free to attend.
Anybody else?
Yeah, yeah. Mayor, we, me and council member Griswold got the opportunity to tour Boykin with City Manager Jim Bustin, and Al Davis took us around, and I wanted to commend the efforts going on at Boykin. They are using every inch of space at that facility. It is in excellent, immaculate condition. There's a lot of good going on there. I'm excited, I'm excited to hear about the improvements that we're going to be having at Boykin, and it was a wonderful tour. It's a great facility. Just had a good, it was a good experience. Going to be having Award Four, Award Four meeting on February 4th. This month, we're going to have, or in February, we're going to have Environmental Services Director Tim Woody to come to speak on recycling efforts, and especially with single, single stream recycling, should be a great opportunity. And also, I will out myself as one of the people, one of the people jumping in the Polar Plunge. As my understanding, there are two others, and I would implore, challenge, if you will, the remainder of city council to support such a worthy cause and join us in jumping in, I don't know, sub-freezing is a little bit dramatic, cold weather in support of such a worthy cause, so.
When is your meeting?
February 4th.
My January award meeting is the 29th of January at 6 o'clock at the Frank Brown Center, and our guest speaker will address runoff from construction sites and mitigation and water management.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Auburn University Communications.
Mayor?
Yes?
You do have one, one item.
Thank you very much, Jim. Boards of Commissions Task Force has concluded their work, and so we are officially disbanding their efforts here tonight, and they have concluded their mission. We appreciate all the work that they've done with this. Does that need to be an official, is that just the measure? Okay, all right, but certainly thank you, Kelly and Beth, for all your hard work, and we'll move ahead, and I remind everybody that, that we've put a lot of time and effort into this. There's no declaration up here that this is a perfect document and a perfect plan, but we have tried hard to hear our community and, and make some better processes for all of us to understand. And so, if not, we'll always be able to look in the mirror and evaluate ourselves and make sure that we're doing the right thing for the right reason. All right? But thank y'all for your work. Thank you, Jim, for reminding me that. All right, Auburn University Communications, I apologize.
Good evening, council. This past weekend, Abbie traveled to Orlando, Florida, and competed in the National Cheerleader Association Nationals, and we are so thankful for such a great mascot and for how well he represented us there, so we're eager to that. Moving on to this week, the university is hosting several events to honor and raise awareness for Martin Luther King Jr. These events include lectures, a trip to Selma, and nonviolent conflict resolution training. Moving forward, at the end of this month, we'll start SGA campaigns. Those will transfer over on February 6th, which will be voting day, and there really shouldn't be no students off campus. There have been rules set up to keep students on campus and not make things too crazy, but on February 6th, students are allowed to campaign off campus, so you will likely see lots of students in T-shirts supporting the candidates for SGA. Thank you so much. We're eager.
Appreciate it. All right, so now we'll begin Citizens' Communications on Agenda Items. I will remind those of you here tonight, there has been one agenda item that has been pulled, withdrawn, actually is the word. That's the, the residential development that was contemplated and the rezoning out on Wire Road. If you would like to comment on that, your time to do that will be at the end of the meeting, not at this point in time, because that is no longer on the agenda. Okay? So just make clarification. But if you'd like to talk about anything on the agenda, please come forward to the microphone and give your name and address for the record, and you will have five minutes. Anything on the agenda tonight? Okay. C and N. City Manager's Communications, Mr. Bustin.
The first item of business this evening is the Consent Agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, sir. May we remove 8C, the endorsement for Alabama Department of Transportation? We may go ahead and, okay.
Mayor, we can proceed with the Consent Agenda, minus 8C, and then we'll come back to 8C.
Okay. So do we have a motion for, to approve the Consent Agenda? Second. I have a motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Consent Agenda has been carried. All right? 8C.
Item 8C is the Council's support for the Alabama Department of Transportation Roundabout Project at the intersection of North College Street and Farmville Road.
I'll move for approval.
Second. Second. A motion in a second. Are there any comments or questions from the city council?
First, I'd like to thank Aldot's willingness to support this and fund this at this intersection, which we know is quite an awkward and dangerous intersection that resides in both wards 2 and 3. But I do want to point out that, as we look to endorse this, that we've also added additional language that hopes that Aldot will reduce the speed limit moving all the way through from 280 to East University or Shirk Jordan Parkway, whichever you want to call it at that intersection, from 55 to 45. They will reduce the speed limits going into the roundabout, but I feel it's important that we also encourage that to happen all the way through because of the safety moving from that stretch. So we've added that as a, an additional consideration for this endorsement.
You know, this is, this is not going to please everybody if a roundabout were to be constructed out there. They had a public hearing at Farmville Baptist, which we've talked about before, that was, that was, that was attended well, and the conclusions out there was that more people were okay with the roundabout than weren't, but there were also people that were very disappointed and they wanted a light put there. This is the path that Aldot will take, and they will not take another path. They'll either leave it as it is, or they'll build a roundabout. It's my perspective as an elected official in this community to endorse things that I believe make our community safer, and I don't believe there's any question that a roundabout at that intersection is going to make that a safer intersection. And at the end of the day, I believe that's the most important thing we can do for our community is make it safer. Will it make it maybe a little less efficient for you as you travel back and forth through there, possibly, but will it make it safer? I believe it will make it safer, and so I believe it's in our best interest to encourage Aldot to move ahead with this. Once again, this is not going to make everybody happy, we understand that, but I do think it makes Auburn a safer place, and I believe that's important. Okay? Anyone else? Okay?
You know, Mayor, it may not be, no, it may not be a disservice to explain, too, why the difference that this highway is serviced by the state and not necessarily by the city, and that kind of limits some of the options, and Jim, if you would, kind of explain a brief difference between the two, if I'm.
Right. This is a state road, is entirely funded by Aldot. There's no matching funds from the city. Since it's their road, their funding, their project, their solution to a concern that we've had at that intersection, and we brought that up to them quite, quite strongly, was this is our solution. So as, as the mayor pointed out, we either accept it or they do nothing. They could do it on their own without our acceptance, they would, probably wouldn't do that, but we really have no control or jurisdiction over this section.
Thank you.
And they have been, as Councilwoman Witten said, they've been willing to make some adjustments, like the speed limit and some of those things that they talked about when they had their presentation at the church as well, so.
All right, anybody else on the council have a comment? Okay, we do have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Under ordinances this evening, we have item 9A is the placement of four stop signs in the Tuscany Hills subdivision, Phase 5.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. A motion second. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward to vote on this tonight? If not, Lindsey?
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 9B has been withdrawn by the applicant. Item 9C1 is Stephen G. Black requesting annexation of 59.68 acres located on the north side of Bud Black Road, one-half mile west of Farmville Road, of the Farmville Road intersection. This was unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning Commission.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Do you have a motion in a second? Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward to vote on this, this evening? If not, are there any questions? Comments? Okay, Lindsey?
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Item 9C2 is Jose and Kristen Caballero requesting annexation of 11.42 acres located at the southeast corner of Stonewall Road and Heath Road. This was unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning Commission.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
I have a motion second. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward to vote on this tonight? Any questions? Comments? If not, Lindsey?
Griswold?
Yes.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
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 Item 9C3 is Farmville Tracks LLC requesting annexation of 0.177 acres west of Auburn Lakes Road and north of West Farmville Road. This was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission.
This was unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission, sorry.
Thank you. All right.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward to vote on this, this evening? If not, are there any questions? Comments? Okay, Lindsey?
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 9C3 is Farmville Tracks LLC requesting annexation of 0.177 acres west of Auburn Lakes Road and north of West Farmville Road. This was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission.
This was unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission, sorry.
Thank you. All right.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward to vote on this, this evening? If not, are there any questions? Comments? Okay, Lindsey?
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Item 9C3 is Jose and Kristen Caballero requesting annexation of 11.42 acres located at the southeast corner of Stonewall Road and Heath Road. This was unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, and a public hearing is required.
We'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
I'm Sarah Heatherly, I'll be your man for a second.
Anyone? Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
For approval? Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions? Sorry, who, who, who introduced the ordinance? Okay, thank you. Well, it's a, it's a resolution, so. So we have a motion in a second. Any questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Those are all the items we have on the agenda this evening.
At this point in time, the, the time for the citizens' open forum, this is the time for you to discuss anything you'd like with the city council. If you'd please come forward to the, to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and you do have three minutes, three minutes to do that.
We'll just go to it after.
Everybody know who I am, Bishop Adial, 618 Howard Street. I would rather speak in five minutes than three, but I see that this council has swindled the citizens down to come and speak at this three-minute hearing when it's clear that we should have First Amendment right, and when I was on the city council, we had five minutes, and now you have allowed us to have only three minutes, which most citizens are not going to have anything to say at the, on that agenda. So that's why years ago when we placed, used to be no limits, and then we set five minutes, and now we backed down to three minutes where citizens, most of them are going to be able to articulate anything in three minutes. So that's why we voted hard, and Tommy was on the city council when, and you, I think you was too, and it's when we said five minutes, now y'all have deleted us down to three, but that's good, all right with me. I know we heard Lindbergh Jackson talked about Jennifer Facation, and when I looked it up, it means a certain group of people targeting a certain piece of property. And in targeting that property, they would prey upon it, seize that property at dirt prices, move in, change it, and bring it up to a certain standard where the poor people living in that area may not be able to, to suffice or finance that property that they would buy. In turn, it caused them to move out of there at a price that those developers know that they getting it at dirt prices. We've checked, and I want you to know that we resident in a lot of folks for the next four years, because we feel like that our community has been preyed upon. If you look at it, and I'm inviting this council to go look, and I seen, it looked like a city gate, and it's where the, the, the people's always out, they're looking at this property, making sure that they do everything right, but when you read what's going on in those so-called singer-family homes, five bedrooms, five beds, one half bed, and they charging anywhere from $500 to $800 a room, and yet, when I talked to the developer, he stated, well, we gave the woman that we bought this property from another house. Well, did you give it to her free? No, she paying, she, she's paying rent, though, she's going to be all right. How can anybody be all right when you swindled them out of their property, put them in a rental home, and they was already in a home where they didn't have to pay rent, and now you telling them that they're going to be all right? And another thing we noticed that they threatening our councilperson, threatening her about her speaking out about what's going on in Northwest Auburn. I am really hurt, and I ask all of you councilmembers to ride. You don't have a predominantly minority district anymore. I ask you, Mayor, Brett, Brett, you ride and see. Our community is hurt, and Connie need help.
Anyone else?
Well, just for the record, Bishop Adial, I do want to say that I did have some of the council members to ride, they have Kelly Griswold, Bob Parsons, and I, we all wrote the community, and they did look at, you know, what's actually going on, on Northwest Auburn. So, and I, and I want to thank them for doing so, because there is an issue. Right now, we don't have but one predominantly black community that's really left in Auburn that we can actually call, call a historic area, and there were, there are some concerns, and it's, it's being discussed with this council. And it, and some things have been discussed, even with the Planning Commission, as to the development, some of the developments. And it will be coming before the council, so I just, you know, basically just want to clear up the record that, you know, some of the councilmember have went out and they have toured the area, and they, they're not pleased with what they see either, so it's just not, you know, the community, but it's, it's, you know, we, we have some that's on this council that is very concerned about what's going on in Northwest Auburn.
I'm also asking that all the councilmen that are concerned, and Tommy, you want to be in the other room, concerned also, let us look at it, go over it, and then you'll see we got one street, one predominantly historic black community now, but all of the rest of it is just about this street.
Okay, anyone else?
Let me just say, Mayor, I have been over there, the west side a good bit, but I don't feel like anybody's been swindled. If somebody's been swindled out of something, they need to come talk to the chief registered police department, and do an investigation, do something about it. I, I still think folks got a right to sell their property if they want to. I'm not going to sit up here and tell you, you can't say, if you've got some family property over there and you want to sell it, I'm not going to sit there and tell you you can't sell it. I don't think that's right. I think, you know, the situation, a lot of folks have been in Auburn a long time, you got folks over there that have been, property been a family name for 100 years. Well, if it comes along to this generation of that family and they finally can make some money off that property, then I'm all for them making it. I'm not going to tell them they can't. I don't think this council should tell them they can't. They wait, the, the great, great granddaddy works hard, farms, whatever. They wait, the great-great-granddaddy works hard, farms, whatever he has to do to pay for the property, and finally it gets passed down through generations, and this particular generation gets a chance to make some money on it. I think it's only fair. I think we wouldn't be much of a council to tell folks they couldn't do it. That's my thinking on it, Bishop.
In speaking to that, I think any community with a heart has to account for the poor and for the oppressed. And, yes, people are free to sell their property at a profit, but if it means that they can only buy with those monies property in Opelika or Loachapoca, that it's a great shame that we would allow that to happen. We, I would like to see this council make a concerted proactive direction in addressing the needs of our poor substantively in terms of some type of affordable housing, offices where people can go and get help, subsidy programs. The poor, the poor should have a place in this town, and we shouldn't drive them out just because we're comfortable in our own little wards. And I think it's incumbent upon us to take this very seriously. As far as I would be concerned, it's deserving of its own task force, the Northwest Auburn situation. This is shameful, what we're doing, and we can do better. A dollar doesn't trump any argument, any and every argument. There is, there is the issue of social justice, decency to the people who struggle harder than many of us here. There are people out there working right now on a third shift, on their second job. Their kids probably with a family member. They can't, they can't even have the luxury of sitting here discussing direction of the city. They're just trying to make their check. So I think, I would love to see us address this seriously. Student housing is going up in Northwest Auburn where there are poor people living, and they're getting pushed out. And I don't think it's, I think it's, I think we can do much, much better.
And just let me add to what you're saying about the poor community. Not only is some of these people poor, but some of these people are uneducated. And they may not understand what's actually happening until after the fact.
That's right.
So I honestly believe that, like Bob was saying, we got to be as a council and as citizens and as developers, and we got to be a little bit more mindful of some of the people that we're dealing with. Now, there has been people who has sold their property, and they come back and say, "Hey, I didn't even know I was doing this, this, and this." Okay? So, I mean, everybody here has common sense. But that's, common sense does not make you understand everything that actually goes on. And I am just about to be a victim of some of this, not the common sense part, not having, no common sense, don't get me wrong. Because I understand what I'm doing if I do it, but my intention is not to do it, because I do understand. But there's, everybody is not in that category. So I just want to put that out there also.
Connie, Mr. Daddell said that you had been threatened. Is that true?
Well, actually, there was a, there was an email read to me that came from some of the developers. And the person that called me, I actually don't even know the person's name, but they did contact me, and they read me an email that was sent by some of the developers. And the email stated that we got to do something about this Connie Taylor because she been in the news too much, and she's, she's, you know, it was quiet, it was quiet until the student housing come up. And now they seem to know something about the ordinance that's going to be, or trying to get passed. So I wouldn't say that they directly threatened me, but somebody did read the email, and they gave me the name of some of the people that was on the email.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Drew Goodner, 432 Pine Dale Drive. I just got my new recycling bin this week. I think I might have been the last street, but I appreciate that. So, and I wanted to thank Chris Warren for everything they do at the library. Thank you. I have attended the last two short-term rental meetings, and thank you, Bob and Brett, for putting those together. The first one was a little bit more informative, and this last one was citizens' input. And I know a lot of people have said, "City council needs to listen to the majority, not the minority." It's been the minority in the past. Listen to the majority of people. And I think this issue has been pushed by the minority. At this meeting, if I'm incorrect, there were two people who spoke out against short-term rentals, and there were 20, 30, 40 speaking in favor of them. I'd love to know the numbers of the response to the online survey, but it seems like there is a massive group of people who want short-term rentals, who want them allowed, who don't see them as an issue. I don't know why it's this awful thing, why we can't regulate them, tax them, and that's it. Allow them wherever you can have a rental property. I don't know why they're different. If you have students living next door to you, it could only be two because it's zoned for that. They can cause the same issues that a few people on the weekend can. This is not this awful issue. They're needed. Families love them. There are families who come here, who stay and tell me. I have a couple staying at mine right now. It's a married couple. He's a physician and their dog. And they said, "This is like a second home to them." They come and stay for two weeks. They're not doing anything wrong. There are a few times where there may be a bigger crowd on the weekends. That's football season in Auburn. I'm not saying there's 20 people there, but yeah, there could be six to eight people, and there could be noise at night. That's hard not to have in certain neighborhoods on football weekends. I think the squeaky wheel has been getting attention for this. I don't know how they got a task force assembled. I agree, it needs to be regulated. But if two to three people come up here every month to a council meeting and berate y'all about a topic, are you going to start a task force for it? I mean, it becomes something where you've got the two or three people that say, "Short-term rentals are terrible. Short-term rentals are terrible." I imagine you thought the survey results in that meeting last Thursday, there was going to be a massive group of people against short-term rentals, and I think it was the opposite. So I would urge you to pass something that allows them citywide without overly regulating them, and just find a way to tax them. Thank you.
And I think Drew brings up a good point here in that, you know, talking about, "I remove myself." No. Economic drivers. We're talking about economic drivers in certain areas of the town, and this may be an area that, in certain areas, that people could, poorer areas could make extra income. I mean, that's a side to think of it as well. You know, we're focusing on Northwest Auburn. If we open it up to that area, that may be, Airbnb may be something good for property owners in that area, so.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Linda Dean, 474 Scott Street. I was also at the short-term rental task force meeting and took notes there, and there were not 30 or 40 people that spoke out in favor of short-term rentals. I would say there were probably a dozen. I have my notes at home with each speaker numbered. The other issue that took place there was that some of the people who spoke out in favor of short-term rentals spoke more than once. They chimed in, and so that other people may have wished to speak who were there to express some of the problems with short-term rentals, but were deprived of an opportunity to do so because those supporting the short-term rentals spoke more than once. So I do think that, I'm very grateful that there was a discussion of this. I think that there does need to be a task force established to examine both sides of this issue, and there are multiple sides of this issue. And I'm grateful that the city is developing an ordinance to effectively gather the income that's probably being lost because there is no ordinance that effectively collects rental from some short-term properties that are in illegal, in zones where they are not legal. So I did want to make that correction, that there were not 30 or 40 people there speaking in favor of short-term rentals, since I have my notes at home, and any of you are free to listen to the video or audio pertaining to that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
528 Sundella Court in Auburn, and I too, and with the short-term rental stuff. I went to both task force meetings. I've emailed my comments to the members, and actually to the entire council. When I was at the meeting last Thursday, I was explaining some of the tax implications of it. Everybody loves, you know, the unavoidable death in taxes, and taxes hung like an elephant in that room. Because when you have a situation, when you have people that either don't know they're supposed to be paying taxes or are flat-out avoiding them and doing the black market thing, or they just simply aren't allowed to pay them to the city, even if they were willing, they can't because they're in an NC zone. It's hard for somebody to stand up and go, "Well, by the way, you know, tax fraud, tax evasion, that's all me, but let me give you my opinion." So there are people that don't want to come forward and talk about it. Going further with that, when I was making my comments, I suppose I was confusing. And to that end, because I have been paying this tax for over three years, and I've had a business license to do this for over three years, I made a sheet of how this tax breaks down, and there's nine copies, each councilmember, because it was said in your council planning packets meeting that I was incorrect. And that Airbnb only collects 11%. Here's a couple of samples of their 11% that I pulled up online as a sound, and you have a copy of House 1220. Just so everybody can understand, because my biggest statement was, is that Airbnb only collects 11%. You go to their website, you bugger room, you don't actually have to book it. Just go to their website, find one you like, put in the date you like for the instant book, and it'll pop up what the taxes are. You can see, they only charge 11%, and I promise, they're not out of the goodness of their heart taking the other 2% and submitting it for you. You have to know, and Airbnb is very good at disclosing, that you're responsible for knowing what taxes you're supposed to pay. And in a court of law, they'll tell you ignorance is not, but you above the law. That 2% is not being collected for the tourism people. It's just not. The city does get their entire 7%. The state of Alabama does get their entire 4%. Tourism is left out to dry. Point I've been making since I submitted my complaint to planning a year and a half ago is this playing field needs to be leveled. Do it throughout the town, but everybody needs to have a business license, and everybody needs to understand very clearly how to pay this 13%, all three parts of it. All the rules, it fits on one sheet of paper. It's not even small print. Thank you.
Just make a few comments on this. So over the last four years, when I've sat where Kelly sat, we had a number of people that would come up here and would be very negative about short-term rentals, and they wanted us to do something. And the city council at that time was, didn't want to deal with it, and I understand that was the choice of that city council. But I felt like that as I went through the campaign last summer and into the fall, this continued to be a part of discussion that came up all the time. And this was something that's not going away. We are a destination town. We have huge athletic events, but our community's evolving even past that, where people are just coming and going all the time. And I know this is part of the modern culture, that people want to choose to visit communities in this manner. And so it was my sense that it was time for us to have a discussion about it as a community, and have a debate, and talk about the pros and cons, and hear from both sides. And so that's what I've asked this Brett and Bob to do, is to lead an effort that gives the community a chance to tell us how they feel. And from there, this council's going to have to get together with the staff, and if we choose to move forward with a plan, then we're going to have to put together some strategies and some do's and don'ts, and we'll vote on it, and then we'll all have to live with it. And that's what we're trying to do. So it was just one of those discussions we weren't having, but it seemed to be bothering a lot of people that we didn't have a philosophy. And so I just felt like it was, my impression was, it was time for us to have a philosophy. So this was all my doing, Drew, so I'm the one who created the task force. Just let you know.
Alright, anyone else? Yes.
William Dean, 474 Scott Street. I want to thank you, one, for your task force. I've looked at this issue for several years, three or four years, actually, and you go online, and there's all these places. You know, you've just got, it just comes up a list this long. They don't really identify them. I don't know where they are. I'm coming to Auburn, and I want to buy a house. Do I want to be next door to an investor-owned BNB, VRBO, what have you, that's rented every weekend all year long? Or do I want to be in a single-family neighborhood, which is zoned, single-family? I'm sure that if we're paying taxes and everything else with our great city GIS program, we can put on the little mapping which one of them's are up for sale as a, you know, rental by owner over the weekend. I understand there are a lot of individuals who need a home, have a hard time making their payment, or need a little extra money, and can rent out a few weekends. Nobody has a problem with that. There are people all over Auburn, in the older neighborhoods, closer into campus, which have a student apartment in their house. They rent to one student, totally legal. Has been, will be, and I hope stays that way. But to have houses opened up to people from all over here, there, and yonder, I would like to at least know where they are if I'm coming to Auburn to buy a house. You know, we know what the garbage service is, we know which voting district, which school district. We don't know where they are. And it's really hard for somebody with my expertise to even find where they are because they're, you know, they're disguised or basically concealed where they're located. They give you a picture and a general neighborhood and that sort of thing. Do they have a street address? No. Do you know, Mr. Buston, where all of them are?
What, personally, no?
Yes.
No.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to be able to go online and look and see where they are. I would think that somebody coming to Auburn in this great city to buy a house would like to know where they are, because I'm not sure I would like to raise my family between two of them. That's just where I feel about it, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I know we have a small piece of business that we wanted to reflect on under other business. I apologize.
That's okay. We just got it out of turn. That's fine. I just, everybody on the council has a memo, or actually, it'll be a press release that the city will be putting out, but it's in regards to our Board of Education vacancy. And the application process is open, and I just wanted to discuss that real quick, that it's open through February the 4th, accepting applications until 5:00 PM. And then, once that closes, this council will receive all applications to review. We will whittle those down to a select slate of finalists, and those interviews will take place on February the 12th, beginning at 3:30. I mean, yes, and then also alternate dates if we need them. Will be on Wednesday, February 13th. The interview panel will be the mayor, mayor pro temp, and councilperson, Kelly, excuse me. Kelly Griswold. And just note that all councilmembers are encouraged to participate, but if you do, you are expected and required to participate in all the interviews. So those time slates between 3:30 and the rest of that evening, and then also on Wednesday, you'd be expected to be at all of those. So just wanted to make sure that we reiterated that. And then we will have the finalists determined by February the 7th, and the questions will be also available at that time. So I just wanted to make sure we all were understanding of that process. Does that make sense?
And I'd like to comment that, most of y'all know, I do not have children in the Auburn City schools. And I'm on this because the task force and the process, the first time I'm going through it. So I actively encourage any and all of y'all, particularly those of you that have school children, to participate in all of the interviews. Your input is invaluable.
input is invaluable.
And we did also make some comments early on that it's our job as a councilperson to encourage constituents within our wards who are interested to apply, so this is a great opportunity to reach out to your constituency. I know that some of you have ward meetings on the 4th, this will be after that deadline is passed, so I suggest you, you know, kind of put out your, if you haven't already, encourage those who may be interested in, within your wards to apply.
Let me ask you a question on this, this alternate interview schedule, did we discuss that one?
We did at the pre-packet meeting, we talked about that we would take the, initial interviews would take place on the 12th, starting at 3:30, but that in the event one of the finalists couldn't make it, or if we had an overflow of these number of candidates, that we would follow through to the alternate interview dates of the 13th, starting at 11.
Well, I guess I should have asked the times, did we discuss the times, 11:00 AM and 11:30 noon?
No, those times were already determined, we didn't have those times at the pre-packet because we didn't have them in front of us, but that's why I was bringing it up tonight.
Is there a move adjourned?
So moved.
We are adjourned.